All right, welcome to this afternoon's or this evening's regular business meeting. We're going to have our invocation by Pastor Nathaniel Jackson of Faith Deliverance Christian Church of Morro. It will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand with him.
Pastor.
Father God, we thank you for this day that you have made. We give you all the praise and the glory for just allowing us to wake up to see another day that you have made right now, Father God. Father God, we pray of this county. We pray that you will increase your peace and your joy right now, Father God. We pray that you will decrease gang violence right now, Father God, and spread the love that you sent your son to do right now, Father God. We give you the praise and the glory. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Welcome to our October 18 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments?
Anyone have any to remove or put on the regular agenda? Go ahead. Commissioner Hamburg?
Yes, and these are just to be taken off and put on the regular agenda, taken out of the consent.
All right.
Number six, seven, eight, that combination. Number fifteen, sixteen.
She's asked to remove.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. I would like to, not so much remove from the agenda, but remove from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. The combo of six, seven, eight together. Number fifteen regarding charitable organizations. That's fifteen. Number sixteen is Resolution 2022-213. Number twenty-one for an explanation. And number twenty-nine, Resolution 2022-236.
What was the last one?
Twenty, number twenty-nine, which is Resolution 236.
Madam Clerk, are you clear on those?
I'm clear. Six, seven, eight, fifteen, sixteen, twenty-one, and twenty-nine. Correct.
On the regular agenda, are there any others?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move number twenty-seven, Resolution 22-232, for explanation.
Any others? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. So moved. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is the approval of the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Are there any questions on any other of the items? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Was that four, one?
Nay.
Four, one, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, our next item is item number six. Central Services Director Carol Rogers.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Chairperson, and Commissioners. The request is for recommendation for award for ITB 22-207, which is Construction of the Fueling Center for Clayton County, Georgia. The request is for award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder meeting the specification, which is Majah Construction Inc., located in Peachtree City, Georgia. The total amount of the project is four million, six hundred, sixty-six, four million, six hundred and sixty thousand. Funding is available through the general fund and the 2019 SPOSS fund. The bid tabulation summary, department recommendation memo, and agreement are all attached for your review and information. My request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion?
Excuse me. I wanted to take six, seven, and eight together because it's a combination, all for the fuel.
Okay, does anybody have objection to her taking six, seven, eight all together?
No, sir.
All right, proceed with seven and eight.
Okay.
I think those are steps.
The seven.
Or Ms. Merritt's.
Right, yes.
Items number seven and number eight, interim CFO Stacy Merritt.
Hi, good afternoon. We've got budget amendment two dash fourteen. Other capital projects fund, we are moving, this is to appropriate fund balance to assist with the construction of the new fueling center in the amount of one point six oh six, seven thirty-five. We've got budget amendment four dash four. This is moving money around in the SPOSS fund to make, to amend the budget for the new fueling center. And it's moving money from Parks and Rec Administration Building, park upgrades, green space, library improvements, correctional facility, and SPOSS program cost to recognize interest earned to provide additional funding for the county fueling center project.
All right, is there a motion?
Number eight.
That was.
Really, okay.
The first one was number seven.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motions, there's a second.
A second?
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg?
First of all, and I think I know the answer, where is the, is this the new fuel center? Or is this a third fuel, fuel center?
This is the one that is planned to go behind the new administration building.
Is that closing out the old one?
Commissioner, this project specifically is to build a new fueling station. There's not funding available to decommission the existing fueling station on government circle. After talking with Director Matarco, our plan is to come back with SPOSS at a later date to decommission that facility if it's the will of the board and the public.
Okay, so right now, we will have, if this passes, we will have three fuel centers.
Just for clarification, what Mr. Hopkins is talking about is, we won't be tearing the old facility down. We will be shutting it down though, so we won't be pumping fuel from there, but we will have to assess the environmental side of removing the old fuel station. But this is all after the new ones up and running.
Okay, so what's the total that we are paying for the center, the new center? Which will include seven, six, seven, and eight, I believe.
So the, go ahead. So the total amount for the contract is four million, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That is for the construction of the fueling center.
Okay, but I see we're getting, on this budget amendment, we're getting a million, six hundred, six thousand, seven thirty-five.
Yeah, we're slightly under.
From fund balance, and then in number eight, we're getting, I'm not sure what the amount is, but we're getting funds from these other places. And one of the places is Parks and Rec upgrades, and I have a question about that because I, well, I don't want to get into, let me find what the total is first.
Okay, so I have the budget at five million, four.
Right, and this is for the construction only. So there may be some additional things that go along with that, you know, any type of surveys, but the construction budget is the four point six.
Okay, so, okay, so what is number eight? What is that for? And how much is that, that we're getting from these other places?
So you're wanting to know the breakdown of where we're getting it from?
Yes, especially from Parks and Rec, because there have been requests, I know, from me for Flat shows, park for improvement, and if we are giving up park upgrades, then I want us to revisit that, and probably for library improvements also.
So what I tasked my, when this came to me, what I tasked my SPOSS analyst with was to find the money to support the fueling station. So she pulled everything she could from 2009 SPOSS, which it has to come through, come from 2009 SPOSS. So if we do have something for Parks and Rec, we might could find it in another SPOSS. I did talk to Patrick, and he said there may be some money left over at the end of the year out of CBDG. So that's going to be up to the board on how y'all want to proceed with the fueling station.
Excuse me, CDBG money? Somebody?
He said that it would be.
Is that a possibility? I mean.
There would be a reconciliation.
Well, I'm really looking at the money in Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, good evening, and Commissioners. The question that was posed to me was for any available funding from CDBG. And what we do at the end of the year is that we look at projects that are not performing, and if they are not performing, then we will capture and reallocate those funds to any other projects that are eligible for those funds.
Okay, do you know how much we're getting, we're taking away from Parks and Rec?
No, and I don't know offhand, yeah.
Okay, so we are taking out of the fund balance from the reserve that we had from the Parks and Rec Administration Building, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and then fifty-seven thousand from park improvements out of the 2009 SPOSS.
Is there any way we can rework that?
So we can. We are bringing a good bit out of the general fund, so it's kind of whichever way you want to do it. If we, if we do that, then we'll have to take more from the general fund, or we can do it this way, maybe possibly see if community development has any money left at the end of the year.
Okay, do we have money from any of the more recent SPOSS monies for Parks and Rec?
So I did talk to Director Hopkins earlier today about the twenty, so twenty-one SPOSS. There is some money in there, but I thought you said it was already allocated.
We're going to bounce a lot tonight, that's cool. So I met with Director Hodges yesterday, specifically related to the 2020 SPOSS program. In that program, there was designated a line for park improvement. Meeting with him yesterday, those funds he was looking at to go specifically to assist with restroom upgrades, which we also have line items specifically linked to those in many parks, and he was asking me about field lighting upgrades. He had previous quotes for that, it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to nine hundred thousand dollars per park to do that. So that four million is fairly allocated, but again, it kind of falls to the will of the board on how you all decide we need to move forward with things. In terms of this, as you know, we can't move between SPOSS years. So for the fueling station, I can't pull money from fifteen for, or 2020. I can only pull for the '09 if I'm pulling SPOSS funds for that. So I think that was the intent that finance had, was to pull together what was available in the '09 SPOSS, it was less of a grab out of the general fund to make this one whole.
Okay. Are we going to work on monies in the future for the park, park improvement?
I think the money is there, Madam Vice Chair, they talking about pulling it away.
Yeah.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes, Commissioner, so the strategy is to, we're looking at a couple of grant funds to ensure that some of the specialized projects we have in place, we can utilize grant funds to take on that. What we tried to do, as Director Hopkins and all have said, we tried to minimize the impact on fund balance, and try to, and ensure that we're pulling money from the present SPOSS programs in order to take that on. But a couple of things, we are looking at, primarily looking at grant funds as a means for which we can support a lot of the specialized projects, and more importantly, figure out ways for which we can either look at some other type of development that might help support those respective areas. So the two primary areas is grant funds, and then looking at development to support those areas that may look at pocket parks that might be developing all for the districts.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Anderson.
What, what grant funds are you looking at?
Well, in the park space, there's quite a few. There's grant funds through DNR, there's grant funds that we facilitate through NRPA, which is the National Recreation Parks Association. Then Chief Merkison provided, provided an update to some of the specialized funds through public safety, that depending upon how disparate that area might be, those grant funds may qualify as well. So we're looking at a multitude of funding sources.
And have you also checked with our Congressman as well, and some of the grant funds?
Yes, ma'am.
And Ossoff as well?
Yes, ma'am. So again, as it pertains to some of those grant funds that's coming down the pipe, whether it's infrastructure bill, or it's congressionally funds that may come from our respective representatives or our senators, we're also looking at that as a means to help support some of these specialized projects.
Thank you, because they've been, they've been offering help and saying they want to come down and help with our parks and recreations and our libraries, and we need to start utilizing that help from them.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Mr. Frank?
I am so concerned. I'm looking at my agenda here, and you're asking this board to vote on something, and you've not provided any documentation, any funding documentation. For this board to have to come before you all, and you're asking us to vote to move funds around, and you're not giving us specific information, that is very concerning. I have asked all of your staff, including yourself, to send me everything, to send this board everything in email. Don't just give us a subject line and a title and ask for us to vote, because when you're talking about moving things around from a SPOSS fund, I want the audience to be clear on this. Those are funds that you voted for them to be used in a specific manner. And if this board in any capacity is choosing to use those funds in any manner other than what you chose to have them voted to be used on, then we're usurping the will of the people. And that SPOSS is voted on every five years. That's number one. Specifically, and I have no accounting information on this, specifically when it comes to moving funds around, I'm a little confused. One minute you're saying you look at something that is underperforming or not performing, and so you're moving money from the Parks and Rec Division, specifically in District Three. Just this past weekend or weekend before, we heard concerns about our tennis court still not being redone, and specifically, you all did a Band-Aid on our tennis courts throughout District Three because there was not enough funding. So now you're telling me that the funding that is in this SPOSS specifically for parks improvement, you're going to move it and use it for something else? It goes back to what I say all the time. When it comes to the staff, you all have to learn to prioritize and to bring something before this board, and we're just guestimating, there might be some CDBG funds, there may be funds over here. When the people voted on funds to be used specifically in a way, and you're taking it upon yourselves to bring it to the board to use it in a different way, it's totally unacceptable. Totally unacceptable. Too often, I'm looking up here, and we fumbling through papers, well, it's four, four million, it's, it's six million. You know what? If you want us to vote on something, provide it to us. We have work sessions, y'all. This is, it's to the point now, it is not conducive for not only this board as a whole because we're a body, but every Commissioner up here is responsible to each one of their districts, let alone Mr. Stanford. You all have been promising time and time again for Rivers Edge to have that build out. That was voted on, guess what? With the previous Commissioner. And I'm in my second term? No, I am ready to vote on this. I am so disappointed in the work that's coming before us, and I don't mince my words.
Ms. Stanford?
The people deserve better.
Anything? Anybody have anything else?
No, I'm finished. I just want to make sure that there will be money in the, someplace in the different grants or CDBG for park improvement.
They can't be sure. So how much is available? Are you sure? How much is available? Where is it in writing?
I'm not following your question, Commissioner, so.
Madam Vice Chair, she wants to be sure that there's funding available. So how can we be sure?
No, I've been in discussions with staff.
You've been in discussions?
Right, I've been in discussions with staff regarding park improvements with the pocket parks, and the pocket parks will be for, I think, at least, what, three or four of the districts?
That's correct.
And, and CDBG money. Always try to keep a tab on that, so. So I'm fine, I'm ready to vote.
No, and one more. Flint River Road, you all have not serviced that park. They deserve so much better. Since I came on this board, we intentionally brought Riverdale into that space, and you're telling me now that you're going to move money that was supposed to be used for a purpose? Flint River Road, Thomas Road deserves so much better. I'm ready for a vote. I had to put that on record, because the people have been asking, and they deserve better.
You refer to Independent, Independence Park, Commissioner?
I'm sorry?
Independence Park?
Independence Park, but I'm ready for a vote.
Anybody have any other questions or comments? All right, those in favor, aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Three, two, it passes. Next.
Our next items are items number fifteen, Resolution 2022-212, Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Board. Resolution 2022-212 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into articles of agreement with certain community charitable organizations, governmental agencies, and professional service providers located and conducting business in Clayton County. To authorize the chairman to execute the agreements and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
Is there a motion? So moved. There's a second. I'll second the motion. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Well, I have several questions here regarding some of the organizations. I'm not sure if they've been named twice, or if they are just coming under different topics, titles.
Different programs, I think.
Well, first of all, the African Children's Fund, which is the very first one, I have a problem with that, because we've given money through the Opera and other funding sources and all, and this, I think, should be going to other organizations. Now, this is not at you personally, this is for all of us. Also, in my checking, I have this Amazing Grace Resource Center, and also Amazing Grace Evangelical, Evangelical, is that Academy or, it's so small?
Yes.
Empowerment Program. Is that the same organization? Oh.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. Excuse me. Each time, and if, for every organization that applies for the Commissioners Block Grant, if they've got multiple programs, we have them submit a separate application for that program. So when you see Amazing Grace, it's actually a separate program that they're asking money for to be funded. Community Services Authority has multiple programs that is funded through Commissioners Block.
You knew I was going to ask about that one, huh?
Huh?
You knew I was going to ask about that one?
Well, because they, they have weatherization, they have Head Start, they have legal aid, and those are separate programs that require funding. It's sort of like the Clayton Center and its multiple different locations for the types of services that they provide. So they can have the big ask, but I ask them, when they're coming to ask you all for money, there's a blurb, there's information that's being evaluated as it relates to that program, so that you all have a better understanding of where the taxpayers' dollars are going to.
Okay, the next question is not for you, it's for us, for the board and, and staff.
Oh, can I address the Africa's Children's Fund?
Mm-hmm.
That's Commissioners Block Grant money that helps towards impoverished folk with, for housing. Their program was geared towards rapid rehousing, and what you're funding, or have given the monies for as it relates to the courts, is that emergency rental assistance. So that's totally separate from, I guess, the American Relief Act monies that came down that they were, I guess, contracted to do for the county. This Commissioners Block Grant was going towards that program that they had been being funded over the past few years.
The one that I never get help on.
I.
Thank you. Okay, sometime back, I mentioned to staff regarding organizations, whether it be boards or some of these charitable organizations coming before us, especially if the Commission Board, if we either appoint board members, or if we give money to these different boards, and we have it somewhere down the line as far as coming before us. But the, right now, I'm really concerned with this Clayton County Community Service Authority, CSA. Haven't heard anything on CSA since our great Reverend Grant passed away years ago and all, and I don't know what's going on, but I see that we are giving a lot of money over there. I don't know who's on the board, I haven't appointed anybody to the board, I don't know how that's done. I think we need to look into this. Hold this, if at all possible, if we hold this and check into this, not hold the whole list, but, and somebody else may have some other concerns, but I definitely have concerns with the African Children's Fund, and with the Clayton County Community Services Authority, and they have applied for three different grants, so.
So let me just shed a little light right quick on the CSA. By virtue of me being the chairman, I am on that board, and until recently, they usually meet the same time we meet, when we have our board meetings, so I have not been able to be in attendance for those meetings. But these are different programs that they're applying for grant assistance in, just like the Hartz, the Nervous has three or four programs on here, and I think we've done picked out a number of organizations that have multiple requests for assistance. So, you know, let's be definitely careful about how we move in terms of saying that this organization only needs one, one area of funding when they have, when they provide funding and assistance in different areas for our county citizens.
I didn't say that.
But it's not I have, we have multiple requests, so.
So what is your request?
My request is to hold off on African Children's Fund and on Clayton Community, Clayton County Community Services Authority until we find out more. Maybe they want to, they can come and give us a presentation as to what they do, who's on the board, how long the people have been on the board, how members, how many members are on that board, and when do you all meet?
The CSA board?
Yes.
Now, the third, the third Thursday at six o'clock, six or six thirty.
Is it Thursday or Tuesday, Mr. Chairman? You said you couldn't make the meeting.
Tuesday, Tuesday.
Do we have to rescind the motion in order to?
Yes, if you want.
Deal with Commissioner Hamburg?
To address it.
Commissioner Hamburg, if I may, not on your side of the House from a funding standpoint, but seeing some of the people that I have referred, the Clayton Collaborative Authority, your Family Connections Partnership Coordinator, coordinating organization, we refer to Community Services Authority, they provide a critical service to the people of Clayton County when it comes to rental assistance, legal aid.
Weatherization.
Weatherization, and at one time, even their Healthy Start Program and the transportation that they were providing within the community.
Do they still have Head Start?
I'm sorry.
Do they still have Head Start?
Yeah, they still, I meant, I work with the Health Department, I meant to say Head Start.
Okay.
But when I have issues, John Brinson, who makes this amount of money and I need some legal aid, Community Services Authority. When I need help with Lahip and some of our elderly citizens, even though they're the Community Services Authority, they're the Community Action Agency, and many of the counties have one organization that's designated with that title, meaning they get some federal funding in, they get assistance from Georgia Power. I'm a little intimate with that program, because I've gone over there numerous times and handwalked some folk over there to get some help. So there. So they're pretty critical. I understand Dr. Kendrick is now the Executive Director over there, and I know she's not gonna have a problem with coming and doing a presentation for you all about a lot of the services that they're providing. So when it comes to having a mechanism in place to get funds out to the community for where it's gonna have the most impact for your dollars, Community Services Authority is one of the best organizations in our county.
Okay, are, are we the only funding source they have?
No, ma'am, they've.
They get state funds, right?
They get some federal, they get some state, they get assistance from, like I said, Georgia Power, and they're that focal point, so much so that even Henry County, when it comes to lie heap, helping those people with their gas bills, electric bills and things, water bills, things like that, that's an organization that a lot of our citizens go to.
Okay, and I noticed they serve not only Clayton County, but they serve Henry County and Fayette County.
Because they don't have, they don't have Community Action Agency, a Community Action Agency within their county. So with that designation, they're able to receive monies for Henry, separate from Clayton County, to service the people of Henry and Buck.
So they do get money from?
Yes, ma'am.
From Henry and from Fayette.
Not from those counties, but from, in, for those programs that are funded from external sources other than the county, for those particular counties.
So their Commissioners don't give money like we do?
No, ma'am.
If I may?
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
This is once again, information coming before us, and I want one sheet of paper that we've had for a while. No additional information, and actually, I gotta tell you something, Mr. Brinson.
Yes, ma'am.
You just stated that we're servicing other counties and they don't have said agency. Well, actually, I got a young lady in my district that actually serves on Henry County Board, because she's on the line. And they are working in Henry County. They do have a, a, an offset of what we have here in Henry. So again, you all are bringing things before us and we're discussing them, but there's nothing written. And I know this is nothing against you, but for the past few weeks, the staff has told us one thing, not provided in writing, and came back and had to tell us something else. And for this Board to want, you want us to vote on this, then we need support and documentation. We've had work sessions on this, there are a lot of organizations that we may have knowledge of knowing exactly what they're doing. And I would have to say, though, at least with CCSA, they're the only orga, one of the few organizations that folks within the district where I serve have gotten responses from. So, but I just think that there is definitely some validity in making sure that we know specifically where our fundings are going, and not that we're guestimating, because I can tell you, unfortunately, Henry County does have that, and one of our very people serve on that Board, and I've been looking at what they've been doing. So for us to vote as a Board to support other folks in other areas, and we got so many people in need in our own county, is concerning. And I have to honestly let you know, too, I've received several calls, one from, oh goodness, they're on here. Let me pull them up real quick. North Bridge Estates contacted me with concerns of the process and procedures, as well as several other organizations. I brought before this Board that we need to revamp this, so I'm willing, Board, to, if we could vote, to move forward with majority. But I definitely think that we need to dig a little deeper. I know that Amazing Grace has been in the community, but again, when we're giving the same organization, which I know to be the same organization, money, that's concerning. And then at the end of the day, regardless of the amount, what type of funds African Children's Fund has had, we submitted them to the State for audit, and to the Feds for an audit. Because till this day, I've got text messages and emails where our folks in this county are getting a runaround, and if you're telling me they're supposed to be helping with housing, whether it's ARPA funds, this fund, it's, it's not happening. And we serve the folks. I mean, it ain't happening. That's of concern. I don't know how they got a one hundred when their, the Board voted to send them for a state and federal audit, and we've yet to get solid information.
Let me say this.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Yeah, I don't mind going forward with this for the community action, whatever, but I would like in the future for them to come and, and just tell us what they're all about, and how, how many Board members they have, who appoints that Board, and when is the last time they've had Board appointments? Because as long as I've been on this Board, I've never had anything come before me as an appointment or whatever. But I have gotten service from them also, well, my constituent aide has. I think last time was like last year sometime. But now, as far, I can't agree with the African Children's Fund, I'm, I'm just, I can't vote to give them more money.
Oh, no, I take no.
Oh, no, not you.
I take no issue about what they were doing. I was made aware that they are part of, of the American Relief Funding. Can I guess that they're being audited on that side of the House? But when it comes to the CBG, from a services, I've referred folk to them as well on that rapid rehousing program that they have been working with for years. I can't address that ERA side, but for the smaller amount that they have been receiving from the Commissioners Block Grant, based on referrals that I've seen in the community, they have provided some assistance, but I don't know to what degree, so.
And let me just say this, they scored a hundred because they have provided the information and documentation that was required, showing that they have been doing the work in the county.
And that's one of the things that I stressed that you all came up with a few years ago, is write a good application. All of the information that we requested, they turned in, and they were scored appropriately from that standpoint. Now, we don't do the auditing, those types of things, that information is submitted to Finance when they're saying how they spent the money, receipts and the such. But as far as their application goes, it was scored appropriately, and to include North Bridge, as far as Commissioners Block Grant, they were scored appropriately based on what was happening. But at the end of the day, when we're looking at those applications and seeing where the fundings, those asks, hey, are you partnering with other organizations in the community to ensure when that dollar comes in, they're able to leverage those relationships and provide even better service with the dollars that you give them? The ones that you are funding, overall, from what John sees, I can't, you know, you all get those phone calls through your constituent aides, but from what I've been able to see, those that you are funding are doing a pretty darn good job.
How many people are working with you, Mr. Brinson?
Well, I work with multiple organizations.
No, how many, you said John sees, who else is evaluating this information?
Well, we usually have about five to six individuals who look at the Commissioners Block Grant, predicated on who submits an application.
How many people did you have this particular time?
Six.
And where did you get those folks from again?
Those folks come from within the community, in fact, a number for, a number of former grassroots graduates, they come through, we instruct them on how to evaluate. You cannot be a Executive Director or running your own nonprofit in order to do it. Much like you all would appoint someone to be on one of the service boards for you all, we reach out to the community for those people who are engaged within the community to actually do the evaluations.
And who does the grassroots program?
That's our leadership program, much like Leadership Clayton. Yes, ma'am.
So it's all housed with you, is what you're telling me?
Chamber does Leadership Clayton, grassroots leadership.
Not talking about grassroots, who does that leadership program? Because you said it's through grassroots.
Yes, well, for evaluation for the Commissioners Grant, we utilize members of grassroots and other individuals within the community to include some of the former Board members for the Collaborative, some of the Board members for some of the other organizations as well, Commissioner.
Okay, one other question. You stated that all these organizations went through an auditing division. Didn't they go through your division? Have you audited these organizations, Ms. Merritt?
No, I said that they submit their information to Finance for how they spent monies and, you know, their invoices.
That's an audit, so I gotta ask her that question. That is the definition of audit. Now, what type of audit can be defined, but I need to ask, Ms. Merritt, are you telling me, because it would be hard to believe you didn't send documentation with this, because you, I think you usually do.
No, ma'am, these come as a recommendation from the Collaborative, so Finance has not gone through these these individually at all. We rely on the Collaborative to make the recommendations based on the scoring.
How can we go ahead with this vote and?
And if y'all have any recommendations on how you want to handle this in the future, definitely open to that.
Because I don't want to hold the money, yeah, I don't want to hold all the money up, but I do have a question with the very first one.
And we can pull, can we pull that one just specifically?
Well, it depends on the motion is amended. Commissioner, how you want to.
No, go ahead and finish that, I thought. You were saying it depends on what?
If you want to amend your motion to exclude the African, African Children's Fund. You made the motion, right?
It needs to be.
I guess the big, the big thing for me is this, I want to be careful that we don't hold up those in need that are in need today, based on these, but going forward, I think we do need a summation of what each, these organizations done, has done, or does do and has done for the Clayton County citizens. I think that would go a long way in really defining and understanding, excuse me, what these folks do. So if I can make, resend my motion and make another motion to approve the entire CB, list exclusive of African Children's Fund, was there another one?
Excluding, not exclusive, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, did I say exclusive? I'm sorry.
You did.
Was there another one from someone else?
Yes, I would like to at least add North Bridge Estates for a thousand dollars at most.
Okay, so exclude the African Children's Fund and North Bridge.
All right, is there a second?
Hold on just a second, you said add, you said add a thousand. You said add a thousand for North, North Bridge, correct?
Yes, and, and we got more money, we could come back and vote on it later, because there's one other organization that worked hard with gardening. We have one of the, I don't even know if the Board is aware, Clayton County has one of those largest farm areas, which the Commissioners know, and we get other grants. It would be nice if we can help support those grants, and that's what North Bridge Estates does, so is others. So I'm fine with this for now, because we'll have to look back at the twenty-five and see what we want to do with it, if not more.
Commissioner, may I make a suggestion?
Commissioner Hamburg?
Yeah, well, to Commissioner Franklin's point. If we're taking off African Children's Fund, then there will be a little bit more for your North Bridge.
North Bridge, that's what I asked to add.
Yes.
Well, this is just a review for a later time, so we're not saying that we're not going to come back in the future and reallocate or vote those funds to those organizations.
But I asked for North Bridge because they did submit, and I, and, and definitely know that, I don't know if you all are aware, but they've actually received grants from the farm, the folks we get the grants from, and they're highly recognized, so that's why I just asked for it to be added to your motion.
Yes, and we did.
Okay.
I think your motion said to exclude African Children and exclude that.
Correct.
She wants to include that.
Well, I'm sorry, remove them from the list, how's that?
No, no, no.
Y'all want me to do the motion, I got it.
We keep telling him he can't use certain words.
We're going to approve everything on this list, correct?
Excluding, uh-huh.
For Africans Children's Fund and North Bridge.
And to add to the list.
I'm sorry.
A thousand dollars to.
A thousand dollars for North Bridge.
I'm done.
I guess you all clear on that motion?
Yeah. Is there a second?
There's a second.
Second by Commissioner Hamburg. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. I'm against it, not against North Bridge, but because the work that African Children's Fund does, and I think that they do excellent work, but the Board has spoken, and we'll move forward.
So for clarification, one thing we could do moving forward is if they, they request an amount over a certain dollar amount, we could have them come and present to the Board if that would, y'all would like to have that happen? Y'all want to give me a dollar amount?
I want you to audit, like he said y'all are doing.
Okay, we can do.
I want people to know what they're talking about and provide us information, and then honestly, we beat this, we beat this for over a year now. Mr., he, he understands. We brought it before the Board for a work session. The notes are here, we just need to follow the notes. Thank you so much, Ms. Merritt.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Our next item is item number sixteen, Resolution twenty-two-two-two-thirteen.
Resolution twenty-two-two-two-thirteen is a resolution to initiate amendments to Appendix A, Article Three, Section three point seven, RS one-ten, District Intent, permitted uses and conditional uses, Article Three, Section three point three-six, Land Use Matrix, Section three point three-seven, RMTSF District Intent, permitted uses and conditional uses. And Article Six, six point, I'm sorry, Article Six, Section six point one-two, Personal Care Home, Boarding Home and Group Home Standards, PCH, regarding boarding houses, group homes, personal care homes, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, are there any questions?
Yes, I did find out more about what this means, and if Mr. E.G.K. can come and explain it so my constituents can hear this, because almost every meeting I have with my homeowners, they always have a question regarding group homes in the community.
Ah, yes, Commissioners, what we are doing here is correcting a scriptless error. We're not adding anything to the code, we're just making corrections, and the corrections are in three areas of the code. The number of persons that are permitted in a boarding house, group home, personal care home, in RS one-ten zoning district. We want to make sure that the code, as was passed by the Commissioners, spreads across the, our code accurately. And moreover, we also are correcting the clarificate. We're trying, we're going to clarify the rationale for minimum acreage that is required to help this usage, and also the distance requirement that we are passed. So we're just gonna make sure that all those things are reflected across all the zoning categories.
So in other words, you can't have more than three?
And.
People in a group home?
I know, the, the regulation is that if you have three or less, you don't have to come to the Board.
Okay.
If you have more than three, you have to come through the BOC process.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they have to have a permit or whatever.
You have to have permit, you have to meet all the requirements, the distant requirement, you have to meet all the things, but more importantly, they have to come through the Board of Commissioners process, yeah.
Okay, just want to get that number straight, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
It's concerning, because RS one-ten, I'm looking at it here, tell me what the acreage zoning is again, sir?
We want to make sure that.
No, what exactly is the number, Mr. E.G.K.?
I think the acreage, now top of my head, I think the acreage is that you must have two acres. You must have two acres in, 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 in order to do those type of uses.
But RS one-ten, how much acreage is that for the zoning?
RS one-ten, it's, if it's subdivided, you have, I think, eleven thousand square feet or something like that, but there are some areas of it that are zoned that are way more than that requirement.
So what we're saying is, we're going to allow people to, at the end of the day, I understand your, what your goal is, but my concern is, is this meeting the goal? And the issue that we know that is happening, RS one-ten, you, we're doing zoning tonight, your folks don't have, do they have that information? Because we're going over zoning. It should be within the code, because I need to know that exact amount.
The.
Because that is close within housing.
What is the question, Commissioner?
Specifically, not the square feet of the home itself, what is the spacing for RS one-ten? Because RS one-eighty, we know what that is, but what is RS one-ten?
RS one-ten, it's eleven thousand square feet.
Eleven thousand square feet?
Yes.
And what percentage of an acre is that, so that we understand that as a bore? Half an acre, quarter acre?
No, we have to do the math to tell you exactly what fraction of an acre that is.
Okay, so let me tell you why I'm asking.
Yes.
Right now, we have, based upon this, you clarified it, will allow for three people to live in a home, which is still. which is still a boarding home without coming before the board, and right now, we've got before us that I've been working with, I think it was Chief Murkison, as well as code enforcement, where we've got folks that will fit within this zoning, where they got all these people living within houses, where they're doing these boarding houses, they have not come before the board, and we get constant code enforcement complaints on them. So I don't know that this is actually meeting the goal, because it's leaving that leeway for some of these folks to continue to operate in a space that has caused time, effort, as well as tax dollars to be able to mediate, and we're not getting to where we need to be.
And Commissioner, your statement is accurate, but please remember that the folks who don't come to us, we don't know.
Right.
It is the neighbors that report them, and when they do, we enforce the code. I have two cases, as I dealt with this afternoon, with Pat Split, that we, we, we are stopping their permit based on what we saw on the floor plans. So, we do have regulation, but there's a lot of things going on that doesn't come through my office, and if it doesn't come, we will not know until somebody actually reports it. But the majority of what we do, they come through and we apply the code.
Okay.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay, it's not tied enough.
Three, three, two passes, next.
The next item is item number twenty-one, Resolution twenty-two-two-two twenty-four.
Resolution twenty-two-two-two twenty-four is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept and award reallocated additional COVID-nineteens Emergency Solution Grant, ESG-dash-CV funds received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to Clayton Community Services and to amend the twenty-twenty annual action plan to be used for individuals and families who are homeless or receiving homeless assistance, and to provide additional homeless assistance and homelessness prevention activities to mitigate the impacts of COVID-nineteen, to authorize the chairman or his designate to execute any related documents and otherwise perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect or appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Hamburg.
Yes. Twenty-one and twenty-nine regarding, um, the monies and all that have been sent, I guess, to, um, to the county, is that, is that the same money or is it different?
Um, I can address twenty-one. Twenty-one, it, um, a CDBG fund from, uh, HUD, yeah.
Okay.
And twenty-nine, Commissioners, ERA funds.
Right, you just answered, okay, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, issue nanos.
Next item is item number twenty-seven, Resolution twenty-two-two-two thirty-two.
Resolution twenty-two-two-two thirty-two is a resolution authorizing Clayton Count- Clayton County to enter into a location agreement with Netflix, providing for the terms and conditions under which Clayton County property will be used for the purpose of production, filming and recording, to authorize the chief operating officer or his designate to execute the location agreement and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second? Uh, second to motion, are there any questions?
Yes, I have some questions.
Commissioner Anderson.
I want to know, you said Netflix, so, um, are you saying there are going to be movies done here at the park, and, um, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and, um, where's the money, um, that is going to be, what type of money is going to be made off of this? What is the amount?
Believe them, the total amount is forty-five thousand dollars.
All right, and I know we've had, um, other movies and other, um, um, other movies being done and, um, from, um, in our parks and re- and across the county. Um, when can we get an explanation to the board of all the money that has been made from our mov- from the movies being done here in Clayton County? Because I would like an explanation of how much we've made.
Uh, we can put that on a work session, if you'd like to just tell it with the location, what timeframe are you looking for?
Um, just, I'll say for the, for the last, um, two to three years, just looking at the movies and what, how much we've made. Also, does this money that, I know it's going to be an international park, so are these monies being used for our parks? Or are they going back to the parks? Or what are these, what is the funds that we make off of these movies? What are they being used for?
So Commissioner, the funding that comes in from film locations strictly on county property goes back into our general fund.
Okay.
Specifically.
Okay.
Um, however, just a point of clarification on question, when you talk about the last two years, are you talking about only on county property, or you want also a report from tourism under, um, Ms. Patrick's to give a sense of that as well? So you want to complete?
Yes.
Okay, no problem, all right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That was it.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, issue nanos.
Our next item is item number twenty-nine, Resolution twenty-two-two-two thirty-six.
Um, board, I, um, was made aware that, um, there's a slight change to, um, this resolution. Uh, this twenty-two-two-two thirty-six is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to accept Emergency Rental Assistance Grant One funds, and these are reallocated funds from DCA under American Recovery Plan Act of twenty-twenty-two for Emergency Rental Assistance Program, to authorize the chairman to execute any documents relating thereto and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And let me say, uh, based on this change, that the funding, uh, has to be spent by December of this year, twenty-twenty-two.
Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second? Uh, second to motion, are there any questions?
Yes. Where's the, where's the supporting documentation and who's going to be in charge of making sure these funds get to where they're supposed to go? We don't have that information. Uh, I understand that there is a timeline, but this item has been on the agenda for several weeks now, and once again, supporting documentation has yet to be provided.
Actually, this is a different one, uh, from, uh, the one that had been gone off and on. Uh, what we did not put in here specifically was who was going to administer the funds because of the issues that have been going on with that topic. So really, all this request right here is for the county to accept the funds, how it's administered will be dictated, um, very soon.
But it says it's through Office of Performance Management, and then also, if you're saying that there's an inaccuracy in your synopsis, because once again, there's no detailed information at all, we have the same thing that everyone else has. If you say that inaccuracy is within the grant fund, it shouldn't be two, because your documentation says two, but you're telling me it's one, so is the nine million correct? What is the correct amount? And do we have any documentation to show what this is? I don't know what it is, I don't, there's nothing to-
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. The nine million that is reallocated from DC, this is the funding that, um, there's a presentation that, uh, CFO Merritt has provided, I believe, to everyone already.
Can we confirm that? Because I'm confused.
Okay. Then it is, yeah, this is money that-
I think we need to hold this item.
Um, board, I would recommend that we would hold this item until next week, so we can be clear on what, whether this is ERA two or ERA one funds. If it's CRA two, uh, you will have until twenty-twenty-five to spend it, so waiting an extra couple of weeks won't matter. If it's ERA one, it may not be worth even bringing it, because I don't know how we'd be able to spend another nine million dollars that fast, so.
And then the other thing is, for record, um, I hear you saying it's something different, they're saying it's something different. Ms. Merritt had a conversation, but yet it still was brought to this board, it's been six million, and we held it until we can identify means to being able to allocate it, but then now we're seeing, you said it's ERA one, two. We could just hold it, you don't even, we could just vote to hold it.
Yeah, so I ju- just want to make sure the board is clear.
Y'all got to get it together.
The six million dollars that you've already voted on, Commissioner, so that's not the issue. The issue is, you have a new pool of money, and the question was whether it's ERA one versus ERA two. We got information that said, we, we looked through the information and said it was ERA two. When we got it in a board meeting, our office provided us perspective that it's ERA one. So, the end of the day, if ultimately it's ERA, ERA two funding, we have more time to actually, to get that money and spend. But let me speak specifically to the plan of action with the six million that you did approve. The goal there is to look at some of our nonprofits and those, um, those organizations of which this board has already vetted, to see if they can assist us with getting the funding out in the community sooner than later. So the deal there is to pull those organizations in, we go through an orientation, we have what we call an intense community, um, vetting. We give our opportunities to work within our recreation centers, our senior centers, and all these other locations, and have weekend blitzes where individuals in the community can come directly to those locations, and we can get that money out in the community sooner than later. So that's the plan of action as it pertains to the six million that you've already approved, and as Attorney Reed alluded to, we'll provide you better clarity as it pertains to this ERA two or one money at the next board meeting.
Thank you, and that sounds really good, Mr. CEO, but the concern, again, is the inaccuracies. So make sure that that information's correct, and then we need to see, I need to see data, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Davis, how you want to proceed?
Well, go ahead and send that motion and move to hold that until the fir- was it the first meeting in November? November first.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose, issue nanos.
Our next item is item number thirty-two, Approval of the Special Call Meeting Minutes.
All right, is there a motion to approve the October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two Special Call Meeting Board Minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, issue nanos.
Our next item is board appointment.
This board appointment is for the Impact Fee Advisory Board. Clayton County Impact Fee Advisory Board was established with the approval of Ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-one-seventy. Committee shall serve in an advisory capacity to assist and advise the board regard- regarding the adoption of a development impact fee ordinance. The board, chairman, and each district commissioner will have two appointments in which the composition of members shall be comprised of no less than fifty percent of members who are representatives from the development, building, or real estate industries. This is Commissioner Davis's last selection, yes, sir.
I still haven't heard from the two individuals I've contacted, I want to hold this until the first board meeting in November.
Do, do you still have two selections overall?
I still have, I have one.
Just one, yes.
All right, Madam Clerk, hold that until Commissioner Davis, uh, notifies you that he has that person, as opposed to keep putting it back on.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Franklin.
Uh, is somebody here working on that? Because I believe this was time sensitive, I understand that everybody has their appointees, but we have to understand that as longer we hold this up, um, it's been well over a month now, uh, we're going to continue to grow our county off of the backs of its current citizens, which citizens are already concerned about the rising cost of their tax. Um, as people need to understand that this Impact Fee Advisory Board is specifically so that, um, we can evaluate and bring in funds from the new developments. We're getting ready to approve new developments again tonight. We approved a large development over four hundred units, uh, right there off of nineteen forty-one, and we're missing out on dollars that could be utilized in a constructive way. Um, we've got to move forward with this. I, I just think that the board needs to understand that we really have got to move forward with this. I think we had an eleven-month timeline, is somebody here, it's Chief Murkison, nobody's here? There was originally an eleven-month timeline, now we've extended this timeline to get this stood up.
Well, there's only one person that's left to be named, so there's no reason for them to not start meeting, because there is truly enough to have a court.
Can we?
Yes, ma'am, so we have a kickoff meeting stated for Tuesday, the twenty-fifth,
Good.
um, to meet with a consultant, um, and go ahead and kind of get that timeline, but yes, ma'am, our, our estimated timeline from start of being able to seat a committee, um, to bring back an ordinance to this board for final approval was roughly eleven months. Um, we think we can make some of that time up, um, but it still will be roughly about that, but to the chairman's point, we have a nine-member board seated, so we will move forward. Um, we'll have our first meeting, as I stated, on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth.
That's good news, thank you so very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Madam Clerk, next.
Right, our next item will be a discussion item on Africa's Children's Fund. This was requested by Commissioner Franklin.
We can hold that item unless you have information to share.
I have this spreadsheet that just shows you the allocations and the spare specs.
Is so, is it just a spreadsheet?
Um, it's just, it's a dollar amount, it shows you all the allocations that we've had, who they went to, and how much is going to be there, and how much is left there.
Okay, thank you. We can review, we can review it. I just provide it, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, next.
Our next items are zoning hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have ten minutes to present its case. If there is more than one speaker per side, please divide your time in order to complete your full presentation within a ten-minute time allotment. When time runs out, please cease, cease speaking and leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor shall speak first. Applicants shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Terrence Petrie, planning and zoning administrator. The first item on the agendas is seventy-three twenty-five, uh, Agenda Item Number Thirty-five. Seventy-three twenty-five Jonesboro Road, BOC number two-two-zero-three-dash-zero-one-two. The applicant has requested that's, that this be continued to the next BOC zoning hearing on November fifteenth.
And he verbally relayed that to you or he-
Uh, he, they sent, sent an email.
Is he here today?
No, they're not.
Okay, Commissioner Davis, how you want to proceed?
We'll go ahead and hold until November fifteenth.
Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
All right, I'll second the motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, issue nanos.
Agenda Items Number Thirty-six and Thirty-seven, um, BOC two-two-zero-four-dash-zero-two-zero-two, uh, which is Future Rangers Map, and BOC two-two-zero-four-dash-zero-two-zero-one, Rezoning. The applicant, um, Tyler McStrain of, of Battle Law, um, had sent me an email just before this meeting started of requesting that these two be removed, uh, be withdrawn.
Withdrawn?
That, yes, sir.
Commissioner Anderson.
Um, that's fine, I, I move that we withdraw.
Is there a second? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, issue nanos.
The next item on the agenda is BOC, is Agenda Item Number Thirty-eight, BOC two-two-zero-five-dash-zero-two-zero-three, to allow a tire shop at fifty-two-ten Highway Forty-two Street C. Um, the applicant, being of Simon, is requesting condition use permit for a tire shop on zero-point-seven-two acres of land of located at fifty-two-ten Highway Forty-two Streets C, Ellandwood, Georgia, three-zero-two-nine-four, which is further known as parcel number twelve-one-eight-one-D-A-zero-zero-nine. The subject property is located at the corner of Highway Forty-two and Forest Parkway. Staff's recommendation was denial, um, as well as Zag's recommendation. Staff's recommendation was denial, as well as Zag's recommendation.
Is the applicant present? Is the applicant present?
No, sir.
All right, well, Commissioner Anderson, how you want to proceed?
Well, you still have to have a public hearing.
Oh, still got to have them. All right, this is a public hearing at this time. If anyone would like to speak in favor of this request, please come forward. Anybody like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition, too? Anybody opposed? Commissioner Anderson.
At this time, I move that we deny the applicant, Ben Simon, and requesting a conditional use permit for the tire shop on at fifty-two-ten Highway forty-two.
Is there a second? Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Is she unanimous?
The next item, item number thirty-nine. BOC two-two-zero-six dash zero-two-one-four, to mend the future dangerous map from MDR to HDR for a tiny home development at nine-five-zero Highway one-thirty-eight. The public hearing for this project wa, for this agenda item was occurred on September twentieth last month.
It was what?
The public hearing
Okay.
occurred last month.
Okay. All right, so.
Yes.
So Commissioner Davis.
I move that we approve BOC twenty-two-zero-six dash zero-two-one-four.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Is she unanimous?
Agenda item number forty, BOC dash two-two-zero-two-one-three, which is a request by D.R. Horton, Inc., to rezon nine-fifty Highway one-thirty-eight, Jonesboro, Georgia, three-zero-two-three-six, from U.V. Urban Village to R.M. Motive Family Residential for property located at to develop a seventy-seven unit tiny home development. Said property consists of plus or minus a ten-point-eight-eight acres, is located in the North Terra Boulevard Overlay District between North Main Street and Highway one-thirty-eight, and is further known as parcel thirteen-two-zero-nine-A-A-zero-zero-one. This is the updated site plan. This is the proposed sign for the development, as well as the landscaping for the entrance. This is, uh, these, um, showing the amended area and distinctly another amended area or a play lawn. Staff recommendation is approval with conditions. Zag recommendation is, is approval of conditions. And the most up-to-date conditions are that, recommended conditions are that prior to issuance, the first certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall make any improvements recommended by the traffic impact study, provided that improvements are approved by the Department of Transportation and Development. All design and construction will be subject to Department of Transportation and Development Review and Approval. House plans and elevations shall be those on in the red areas attached as exhibits to this case. Any modifications shall be subject to director, uh, to Director of Community Development Approval. Developers shall adhere to the overlay requirements for sidewalks, multi-use paths, and lighting. Any modifications shall be subject to Director of Community Development Approval. Number four is to provide one traffic service for the entire development. Five is to install no parking signs. And six is must have, and must have a homeowners association. That concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, is applicant present?
Good evening, Commissioners. Tiffany Hogan, thirteen-seventy-one Dogwood Drive, Conyers, Georgia, three-zero-zero-one-two, on behalf of D.R. Horton, Inc.
Ma'am, would you like to reserve any minutes for rebuttal should somebody be in opposition?
Uh, yes, five minutes.
Five minutes. Set the clock at five and please proceed.
After our last appearance before the board, we did work with the engineer for the Department of Transportation for the county, and we had a revised traffic study completed, which did indicate a right turn lane into the community. So it's shown right there in the front of the rendering that is on the screen now. With the addition of that right turn lane and the right-of-way that would be necessary for that, we did use, lose one unit. So it is now a seventy-six unit development for the community. In working with the Commissioner and hearing feedback from the members of the community that were present last time, we did also provide additional renderings that showed the landscaping. There is an entrance monument on each side of the main entrance into the development. You can see the landscaping that will be around the entrance there as well as the sidewalks. This is of the amenity area, but also gives an indication of what the landscaping between the units would look like as well. The area with the cars parked there is the parking area around the mail kiosk. And this just gives a additional image of the other play lawn that will be in the community. And as staff has presented, there are six proposed conditions that are a combination of staff recommendation as well as zag. And we do agree with each one of the conditions presented. And we will adhere to all of the requirements of the Terra Overlay District, which includes the sidewalks, the multi-use paths, and the lighting along the main entrance for pedestrian safety as well as some lighting interior to the project. I will reserve my remaining time.
Okay, thank you. All right, this time it's a public hearing, so there are there, is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of the development? Come forward.
Good evening, everyone. Otanya Jean Funny, unincorporated Clayton. I do believe this is going to be needed for our community. So I would support it, but I would like to see timelines put in. Having worked with D.R. Horton and Ms. Tiffany on our subdivision, we need a timeline of how many units need to be sold before the HOA is turned over. And also, there should be a timeline of when amenities are going to be done. So if it's, the construction is like fifty percent, then start the amenities because these are issues that we have with D.R. Horton. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition, too? Anybody opposed? Ma'am, would you use, like to use any of your five minutes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Funny, for that comment. One of the things to mention with Ms. Funny's situation, that development was actually started by a different developer, and that was the reason that that amenity was not put in sooner. I believe that there are things that now address that in your code for a timeline for when the amenity does have to be installed. And we will adhere to all of those timelines, as well as I believe your code addresses HOA turnover now as well. It does. Okay, so we will adhere to all of the code requirements.
Thank you. Can we hear what that code requirement is when the HOA is turned over?
Do we govern that or does the state govern that through the GAR contract?
I believe each municipality has a different timeline because I know that hearing counties is a bit different from everyone else's.
So if I may, Commissioner Davis, just to let you know.
Then we need to make sure that it's consistent with the GAR agreement because you've got people buying homes and it's based upon real estate standards. So do we know that what we have in place is in sync with what's required through the state, through GAR?
We will know in a moment. Go ahead, sir.
So section number eight-eight-six dash one-three-nine. The requires the developer to enact a homeowners association. And the developer shall serve as executive director until fifty percent of lots have received a CO. And it states if for any reason a homeowners association becomes non-existent, the developer shall again establish a new homeowners association and shall again serve as its executive director until the association has been successfully in operation for one full year.
So fifty percent?
Thirty-nine. We're looking at thirty-nine homes that have to be sold.
We're at seventy-six now. I think it's more than fifty percent based upon GAR. It's not right at fifty. It's fifty plus one.
That'll be thirty-nine.
Okay.
So your standard's correct.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Davis.
Can we put that in as one of the conditions, though, even though it's there? And also, too, even though you stated the lighting, I don't see anything on the lighting in the recommendation or the conditions. It's not spoken about.
The way that it's addressed is condition number three, saying that we'll adhere to the overlay requirements for sidewalks, multi-use paths, and lighting. Clayton County also requires a landscape plan and a lighting plan be approved prior to any permits being issued.
I move that we approve B twenty-two-zero-six dash zero-two-one-three with conditions.
Is there a second? Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose. Is she unanimous?
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is, is, is number forty-one, which is BOC dash two-two-zero-six dash zero-two-five. It does, uh, which is a request by Kenji Construction, Inc. for a conditional use permit at sixty-six-five Old Dixie Road, Forest Park, Georgia, three-zero-two-nine-seven, to reconfigure an existing convenience store with gas sales in the GB, General Business Zoning District. Said property consists of plus or minus one-point-one-seven acres between Hilltop Drive and Thomas Drive and is further known as parcel number thirteen-one-one-five-A-A-zero-zero-eight. Even though this does say it is existing, the, this business, um, has not been operating for some time, and so it's more of a defunct gas station.
All right, is the applicant here? Is applicant present? Please come forward. Were you finished, sir? I'm sorry.
Um, no, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So this is the existing conditions of the property. The proposal is to move the canopy from the front, from its current location to the left-hand side of the building as you look, look at it. That's the proposal. And so in the proposed site plan, it would be on the left-hand side of the, the pumps would be on the left-hand side of the property. And this is the elevations that were provided. Of the, the proposal is for a, a food mart with, with gas station along with a laundromat as well as a beauty shop supply store within this empty building. Staff recommended approval with conditions and zag recommendation is, is approval of conditions as well. And those proposed conditions are resurfaced parking lot along with proposed new striping. Hours of operation shall be from five AM to eleven PM. Improve existing sidewalks. Renovate the external and internal structure. Add infrastructure for electric vehicle charging station. And add landscaping that will be regularly maintained. That completes the presentation.
Applicant, please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Coonj Patel with Coonj Construction, eight-zero-six-two Eisenhower Parkway, Lysella, Georgia. We are here presenting this project.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but
Yes, sir.
Would you like to save any minutes for rebuttal?
A couple of minutes, we find two minutes.
All right, two minutes.
Yes, sir.
So put eight on the clock. Please proceed.
Sure. Uh, this prod, this building has been here since two thousand and seven. It was constructed back then, never been opened. We suspect because of the way it was built back then, it's hard for cars to get in and get out. So the business wasn't viable, we believe. So that's what we have come in and proposed that we move the pumps where they are now to the other side where they're much more accessible and it opens up the area where the entrance is. So it's much easier on traffic. This is a, I mean, a blighted structure there on, on Old Dixie and we, I think, would add great to the, that street, that section right there.
Okay. All right, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody like to speak in favor, too?
Yes, sir, I'd like to.
Please come forward, sir.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. In speaking in favor of this person's request, I would like to also add that a number seven in recommendations for the, for the occupancy, that the area be kept as clean as the standards of QT service stations. That's all I need to say.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in opposition, too? Anybody opposed? Commissioner Anderson.
Uh, yes. I, I think you read that the pumps would be moved to the left of the building?
That is correct.
Uh, where is the young man?
Sir, applicant.
Yes, I have a question. Okay, when you enter that property
Yes, ma'am.
to the left is more building.
Correct. So if you can, if you look at that on the drawing, you see on the left that we have a big parking area and there's a bunch of space there where we can put the pumps.
On the side of the building?
Yes, ma'am.
Not in the?
Oh, no, not in the front, on the side, that's correct.
On the side?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So what are you going to do with that part of the building? That, the big open area? I know you said a convenience store, but that's awful big for just a convenience store.
Well, no, it's going to be subdivided. So I think the convenience store, I'm not sure on the square footage right now, I don't remember, but I think it's thirty-five-four thousand square foot on this convenience store. And then we have a large laundromat in the middle, in the middle section. And then we have a beauty supply at the end of the building.
Beauty supply?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Okay. And where is your parking going to be?
Um, we have plenty of parking in front of the building and on the side, on, on the right side of the property.
In front of the building?
Yes, ma'am, there's
Oh, you're going to move the tanks?
Yes, no, 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 the tanks will stay where they are, but the canopy and the pumps are moving. So that opens up that surface area for parking.
Is that on the condition?
Go to the drawings.
I'm sorry.
Have you all, have staff checked this out? I, I don't see the spot, parking space.
Go to the drawing.
Madam Vice Chair. Yes. I do want to let you know, I think we passed some time ago, an ordinance that states that there was a moratorium or something on beauty supplies and dollar trees.
Shop, not supply. So it's, it's more retail, not wholesale.
Well, we got enough of those.
Oh, that's fine. I mean, if
I'm just saying, but there is, this board, excuse me. But we did vote as a board, Madam Vice Chair, just so that we have all this information together. The board voted some time ago to limit the number of dollar stores, beauty supplies in the county. And that was a unanimous vote, just so we can all be reminded.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Um, well, it doesn't need necessarily have a beauty supply, but well, the staff and was, we recommended to us that we put something in that section, not say, hey, open retail. So we decided to put that in as a, and it doesn't have to be that.
Go back to the first, the drawing of the first, or the picture of the of the present facility.
Yeah, see, I'm I'm trying to figure out.
So to the left of there, they're gonna move the canopy and move that to the left.
But that, those are the, those are the tanks.
No, these are the pumps.
Pumps, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, all that's gonna be moved to the left, left-hand side.
Oh, I thought you said they were not gonna be moved.
No, he's moving.
The tanks aren't moving, the pumps are. Pumps and canopy are, the tanks are underground.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Can can that, can they, can that happen?
It's never, the tank's never been used, right?
Okay. So that's gonna be moved.
Got any other questions?
Uh, yes, so what are you gonna put in that space instead of the beauty supply?
We don't know, I mean, it could be an open retail space for future tenants. And that's, and we, I mean, I can't tell you right now. Cause I mean, we were told to put in something and that's what we put in. If if we have a a moratorium for that, we don't know right now.
I can't vote on something, I need to know.
But we can't have it as an open retail space for future, cause if it's a moratorium, we're not gonna get a business license anyway.
Somebody tell me.
I I think, sir, just to help you out a little bit.
Yes, ma'am.
I think the concern is you came before this board and even though you may not quite know, you were quick to state one thing. So I I think we need to know that you're looking forward to bring some businesses that we want to have in the county.
So.
That's that's what I think we may need to do.
That's just, I'm just one vote.
I understand.
So at the end of the day, it's like the staff recommended, as long as a business that is allowable for that space that I guess you can get with the uh, with staff and work through that as to what that possibility could be.
But not a beauty supply.
And then you got a laundromat.
All right, madam.
Got enough?
Question.
Okay. Okay, I um, I recommend approval for B O.C. two-two oh six dash zero two zero five C.U.P.
With the conditions.
With the condi, yes, with the conditions stated here. And also to add as a condition, not to include a beauty supply store.
You okay with the laundromat, Madam Vice Chair?
I'm okay with the laundromat.
You agree with the conditions?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a second? A second to motion. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This unanimous.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commission members. My name is Angela Rambo, I'm a planner with a collaborative firm. Next on the agenda, we have case B O.C. two-two zero four zero two zero zero. This is a request for C.U.P. by Greater Deliverance Church for a conditional use permit to operate a place of worship at seventy-four twenty Davidson Circle East, Stockbridge, Georgia, which is in the General Business Zoning District and the Highway one thirty-eight East Overlay District. Said property consisting of plus or minus one point one acres is further known as parcel one-two zero seven two D A zero zero nine and is located near the corner of Davidson Parkway and Davidson Circle. Future land use. P and Z recommendation was approval with one condition as well as the ZAG recommendation approval with one condition. And that condition reads as follows. The applicant shall be allowed to remove the two existing trees. However, the applicant shall submit a landscape plan to the zoning administrator for approval and shall install the approved landscaping before March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. That concludes the staff presentation.
All right, is applicant present?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Terrence Jones, I serve as the Senior Pastor of Greater Deliverance Church.
And would you like to reserve any minutes?
Let's say seven, please. Yes, sir. Uh, first of all, thanks for this opportunity and also thank you for your contribution to our community. It's a great, you know, opportunity to meet you all for the first time here today. And um, this property here has been occupied for the last twenty-one years by the Body Talk Fitness Center. We recently acquired it as one of our campuses or will be one of our campuses here in Georgia. And on the, well, you know, our major target has been the south side of of Atlanta. We started in East Point. And there is actually no, all of the renovations that have been completed to this property has been, for the most part, cosmetic, there's been no structural changes. And so we are requesting that a conditional use permit to operate a worship facility here at this location.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody here like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor of? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Would you like any other comments?
Yes, it should also be noted, which I think is pretty unique, that in this particular district, this area, there are no other worship centers, no other churches directly in that area. And it should also be noted that there is a concern with homelessness in that direct area, which we are positioned to minister to those needs. But I think the greatest thing is that there are no other churches in that direct area.
Commissioner Anderson.
I also see on here, um, you all have, um, the applicant will be allowed to remove existing, the two existing trees.
That's correct.
Okay, so I'll just, I was just wondering, so where are the trees located on the property?
Yes, so they're in the front of the property. And the request was to have, I believe there was two additional trees. So what we're gonna do is remove the two trees and then we're gonna plant four new ones so that it will be uniformed.
All right, okay, thank you, thank you. I'm ready to move for the vote. And I move that we accept the C.U.P. request for Greater Deliverance Church for the conditional use permit to operate a place of worship on seventy-four twenty Davidson Circle.
With the condition.
And with the condition for the trees.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, this unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys.
Next on the agenda, we have B O.C. two-two zero eight zero two two six. This is a request by Paramount Engineering LLC to amend the future land use category for five fifty-seven thirty-seven and fifty-seven eighty-one, Highway eighty-five. And it's my understanding that the applicant has asked to okay, we're gonna go ahead with the public hearing. Riverdale fifty-seven thirty-seven and fifty-seven eighty-one, Highway eighty-five, Riverdale, Georgia, three zero four nine, from mixed-use commercial industrial to high-density residential for a hundred and two-unit, single-family attached town home development. Said property consisting of plus or minus thirteen acres is located in the Cherry Hills Overlay District between Rock Hill Drive and Garden Walk Boulevard and is further known as parcels one-three one oh seven A eight zero zero two and one-three one oh seven A eight A zero zero three. Planning and zoning staff has recommended approval of this change to the future land use map. And the zoning, the ZAG board has also re, also recommended approval.
Applicants present.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. George Harper Paramount Engineering, eleven East Broad Street, Noonan, Georgia. I would like to reserve three minutes for rebuttal, please.
Three minutes, okay.
So as the the staff stated, we're bringing this before you tonight. The property is currently zoned H.I. It is surrounded by the Temple of Atlanta to the south, the Hindu Temple to the south, apartment complex to the rear, and then a vacant wooded space to the north. And across the street are some other apartments and and commercial, commercial district. And so this property's been wooded for quite some time. I think initially it was probably expected that a lot of the industrial development from the north side of Highway eighty-five would kind of creep down this way. But it just, it just hasn't, probably has been sitting there vacant for a while, it's wooded and undeveloped. And so my clients were purchasing this property to build a hundred and two townhomes. These will be mostly two to three-bedroom or, yes, two-three bedrooms, will have two car garages. The amenities will have a walking trail, a playground and a pavilion. Will have the community mailbox, will have a homeowners association, five-foot sidewalks all the way throughout as well as along Highway eighty-five. The price points are expected to be around two and eighty-nine thousand to three hundred thousand. They're trying to keep it somewhat in the affordable range if three hundred thousand is affordable these days. But they they hope to cater to a lot of the members of the temple. They've had, they've had a lot of interest. The developers actually attend the temple there. And they've had quite a bit of interest from members of the temple. In fact, they said they've had like thirty-five homes already kind of spoken for. A lot of the members of the temple there, not to go into too much detail, but live in all different parts of Atlanta. And so they're real interested in in lots, especially a lot of the older ones, of being a lot closer. So we met with the, in through the ZAG meeting, we had an extensive conversation with the homeowner to the north here tonight, and I'm sure he will speak in a minute, and went through a lot of iterations on, you know, some of his concerns. And we did proffer a six-foot chain link fence along the entire north property line as well as around the playground. And he he was concerned about children leaving the playground, getting over into his his property. So we did proffer that to to help, you know, satisfy some of his concerns. There will be no rentals, which I think is a big thing. They expect about a two-year build-out with the whole project. And we are agreeable to all of the conditions that are placed, that have been placed by the ZAG board, so.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Come forward.
My name is Jeffrey A. Edwards. I live at fifty-seven fifteen Highway eighty-five, which I think the gentleman just said was unoccupied land. My home is there, it's been there all my life, which is seventy-two years. So when the community planning department had this owning of this area, this whole area, changed to heavy industrial, including my home, I was told that that was the best use of this area. And I shouldn't worry because when a company decided to build here, they would have to get, have my property and it would be worth a lot more as heavy industrial than as residential. Well, last year, a commercial warehouse was built on all the land to the north of me. And now I have a fifty-foot concrete block wall next to my bedroom. The lights are so bright that I have to keep the drapes closed at night. If this project is approved, then all the land to the south of me will be gone. Not as a heavy industrial project, but as housing. This leaves me sandwiched in between, still being charged heavy industrial taxes and no chance of that happening. Now, to be honest, that's, well, first of all, the the zoning meeting a couple of weeks ago was the first time I even saw the layout for this project. The only time that I thought something was happening was when the little white sign got put out by the road saying that there was gonna be a meeting for zoning changes. It stayed up a week until it just disappeared one day. Wasn't just knocked down, it was gone. Which is, I thought, was a little strange, but anyway. The main, my main concern with this project is since, you know, my, the play area that they have there is a hundred yards from the houses, through woods. And it, but it's only a hundred feet from my home. And it's only a hundred feet from Highway eighty-five. That's not too good for playing. But my concern, I guess, because of this layout is if it can't be moved, is privacy and security. You've got a lot of people that are gonna be here and they're gonna be around on the property. Now, they they said that they're gonna put a six-feet, a six-foot chain link fence up on the property line. I would ask that that be a privacy fence instead of just open chain links. And if you would, please have it set back from the property line at least fifty feet so it doesn't cut through my side yard. But you know, like I say, to to be honest, looking at the the how, the the housing and everything that was presented at the zoning thing, it's gonna be nice. And I don't really have a problem with that, it's just all the stuff that's right up against my property line that concerns me. And if 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 safety and security or privacy and security is taken care of, then it's, sounds fine with me. I mean, I'm in opposition to it, but not really. If that makes sense. You know, there's just a few concerns because, again, at at the zoning meeting, this is the first time that I found out what what was being proposed. And this was after the meeting was over, so it's only been, you know, the last couple of weeks that I've had to really look this thing over and see if there's anything that really jumps out as being bad. I do remember that after the property in the area was changed to heavy industrial, and that's probably been ten or so years ago, sometime after that, there was almost an exact proposal for this property. And at that time, it was the same thing. I had a real problem with the kids being so close to to me and the road and all their other things. And unfortunately, I thought I had kept all the paperwork on every time I have to come down here. But I can't find it, of course. But in any case, when this, when this was which was was proposed, shown, I thought, wait a minute, there's something about this that looks awfully familiar. But in any case, again, it's just the things that are near the property line that have me concerned. If the fence is a good fence and if it is a privacy fence so that, you know, I don't have to look at the folks and the folks don't have to look at me because it is very close to my house. And if they would set it back from the from the property line so that the fence won't be so obvious going through my yard, I guess that's really the the main, main problems I had and I'm sure we can work it out. If I had been notified about the information meeting that they were supposed to have had, and they said nobody came, that's cause I didn't know about it, I'm sure we could have probably hammered a lot of this stuff out at that time. have probably hammered a lot of this stuff out at that time. And I still think we need to all get together and the, the builders and all that, and just make sure that we're all on the same page. But there's not a whole lot that's really got me bugged, I guess you might say. So, anyway, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else in opposition to? All right, sir, you want to use your last three minutes?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and like I said, we, I did meet extensively with Mr. Edwards, even after the meeting last time, kind of explaining to him a little more of what our, our project was. And I, and I think after we, you could tell he was a little more amenable to what we were proposing. I, I do want to point out, you know, that area to the north, there's a creek that runs through the property, and the area to the north is pretty heavily wooded. And our intention was to leave it wooded. It's really not developable, other than just to put the, the walking trail and the playground in. I'd be more than happy to move the playground to another location to where it's farther away from his house. That would not be a problem at all. Maybe on the south side, of course, maybe down closer to the creek and back further away from Highway 85, that's fine. We, we don't have any issues with that at all. The fence, yeah, we, we agreed to the privacy fence in the meeting. We have no issues with that. I don't really know about setting it back 50 feet from the property line. But if he doesn't want on, right, directly on the property line, I would think, you know, 10 feet or so would be, you know, amenable to us. But, but we're willing to work with Mr. Edwards. Listen, I understand his concerns. If I lived right there, I would probably have some of the same myself. So, but we're trying to do the best we can to leave it wooded, leave it undisturbed, to provide a pretty good buffer between him and the, and the community.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hambrich.
Uh, yes. First, we don't want to put the creek, we don't want to put the playground near the creek, number one.
No, ma'am.
But I would like to see the playground moved to the back area, which backs up to an apartment complex. So I'm not sure what kind of divider or something to keep the kids safe would work. Any suggestions from staff? And a couple of other things, well, we can get to that later. But I guess right now, my suggestion would be to put the playground in another area. And as far as the walking trail, I'm not sure where that space will be.
Yeah, I mean, we have no problems at all. If, if we wanted to bring the walking trail off the cul-de-sac in the back, back there, that would be fine. I have no issues with that at all. And come across the creek and, and maybe access, excuse me if you don't mind, maybe access a little bit more of this area here, because I believe this, Mr. Edwards' house is about right here.
That's about right, yeah.
And so maybe utilize some of this area. The reason I picked this area, it was a little wider, it was a little more, had a little more room up here. But we're amenable to movement around that.
Well, I mean, for safety issues too, because Highway 85 is a busy highway.
Yes, ma'am.
If the kids get out in it, that, that's a problem. To include the privacy fence, still include the privacy fence.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, we have businesses or companies coming here often with all these pretty renderings.
Mm-hmm.
And how can we safeguard this and make sure that what they tell us at these meetings they're going to build, that it is built? Is there some wording we can put in our agreement?
Uh, yes, we can do a little bit more than the wording. On this case right here, the elevations that were shown us for this project, we didn't have enough time, enough time to vet it with our new residential and architectural standards. So there, there is still some work to do on the finished elevations, the exterior finish for this property. And also there are other things that we needed to talk about, about that have already been discussed. The, the stream crossing, we want to see the details of the stream crossing, since that little kids might be going by there. We want to see there in detail. So I know that staff initially said approval. I am suggesting to the board that I would like to amend, amend that recommendation of approval, for this to be tabled to the next meeting, so that we can work out the exterior elevations to meet our, our residential and architectural standards, and also talk about some of the issues that was raised this evening.
Okay, along with that, I, I mean, I'm fine with that, but I would like to mention too, as, as far as the parking, I know it's two-car garage.
Yes, yes.
And what kind of setbacks? I, I want to discuss all this now, so when it does come back, that we'll be ready.
And my suggestion, Commissioner, would be is that once we, they send us new plans and lay out the footprint of what we are looking at, we will schedule a meeting to meet with you, so that you get a chance to see it before it gets back to the board again, and to be voted on, yeah.
Okay. And also, let me mention this, no parking signs to be, you know, since they have the garages or whatever, we don't need the parking on the street. So we'll say, and I understand that there is a space for guest parking, but I would like to see no parking signs.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if you, if they, if you all have gone through the traffic or whatever, with the traffic engineers or whatever for the county. Jeff, do you know? And, and I'm asking that because where this is, is south of 75. Okay, which means that when, I'm not sure where your entrance or exit is going to be, but for people to exit, they cannot make a left. So is, that's going to be a problem. I don't, I don't know if you all have discussed that, but I'm sure a lot of people would have want to go back to north, to 75 or somewhere, you know, up in that area.
Yes, ma'am. Our, our proposed entrance lines up with an existing median cut in, on Highway 85. So they will be able to go out, take a right to go back to Riverdale, or to take a left to go back to, to 85.
How are they going to take a left?
You cut right across the highway.
You got.
There's a median cut there, that's what that's for.
That can't, I mean, that's a problem.
Where they have it proposed is at the existing median opening. So unless, when they go to Georgia DRT for their permit to encroach within Georgia DOTs right away, unless they restrict that movement, they will be free to, to make a left turn.
I hope they will, because I can see that being a lot of accidents right there. I mean, they'll need traffic light or something, or everybody go to the right. You know, that's, that's a problem.
We will have to get approval from GDOT, being that we're in there right of way. So yes, ma'am, if they have concerns about that, and we have to provide traffic studies and all this type of stuff, then, then that will come up.
Have you gone through GRADA yet?
Ma'am?
Has this gone through GRADA?
It doesn't go through GRADA, it would go to GDOT. We have sent it to GDOT, and they were reviewing it just as, like their conceptual review. Since it hadn't been zoned yet, they, they didn't really go through a full review. But, I mean, we do show the required decal lanes, sidewalks along there, so it lined up with an existing median cut, so.
What's the number of units again?
102 is what we have proposed.
Oh, that is on GRADA, but it's still GDOT, gotcha.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're going to hold it, Mr. GK?
No, Commissioner, what do you want to?
Uh, if, well, are you all in agreement with holding that?
If you have concerns that we haven't addressed, then yes, ma'am.
I, I do have concerns.
Okay, yes, ma'am, we're, we're good with that.
So, I'm, for us to get all this done, and when, well.
Yes, I think, Commissioner, when do you think it's a good time? The next board meeting or the board meeting in December?
I mean, we, we provided all the information that was required in the application. So, I mean, if, if the staff needs some time to review, I would, I would think maybe by next month, we should be able to come back and, and do that, with hope.
You think? Do you think it'll only take?
Yeah, I, I, the issues are not that much to resolve. We just want to make sure that elevations match our new, our new standard. And also, some of the things we're going to have to do on the, on the amenity side. So that should not, that should be, hopefully, enough time to come back to the next board meeting.
Okay, well, I would like to get with staff and, right.
The applicant.
Right, the applicant, before coming back to this board, so we won't rehash
Yes, ma'am.
the same things.
Okay, Commissioner.
So I will.
So, Commissioner, I recommend that most, since most of the discussion was on 44, that you would table 43 with understanding, clerk, that we've already had a public hearing on 43.
Okay.
Table 43 and 44 to the next meeting.
And 44.
And then there'll be a public hearing on 44, which likely will address some of the things that you've already outlined.
Okay. And the next meeting, I think, is.
November 15.
15, okay. Well, my motion is to hold this to the next zoning meeting, November 15.
43 and.
43 and 44.
All right, motion made, submitted by Commissioner Davis. Any other questions?
I, I do have one.
Commissioner Davis.
The gentleman stated, his property is zoned HI, his residential property is zoned HI. If that is true, and his property is zoned HI, is there a way to change his zoning on his property? Because HI has a higher tax rate, isn't it?
We, um.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
No, he's talking about Mr. Edwards.
Yeah, yeah, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't remember his name.
I knew he was talking about Mr. Edwards. Yes, Commissioner, you are right. We plan on talking to Mr. Edward and see how that whole area have been in flocks back and forth. So we plan on talking to Mr. Edwards.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue nanos.
Okay, so next on our agenda, we have BLC 2208-225. This is a request by A&amp;E Partners on behalf of First Christian Church of Jonesboro. They are requesting a modification to the zoning conditions to construct a multifamily senior housing development of 140 units on plus or minus 11.78 acres at high, at 625 Highway 138, formerly known as 665 North Avenue, Jonesboro, Georgia. The subject property, which is known as parcel 13210C A001, is located within the multifamily residential zoning district and the Highway 138 overlay district, and is west of the Kroger Shopping Center near the city of Jonesboro. The planning and zoning staff has recommended approval with five conditions for this project. The ZAG has recommended approval with five conditions as well. And the conditions read as follows. The proposed development shall have no more than 140 units. The development shall, the development plan shall comply with general conformity of the provided site plan provided by the applicant dated August 9, 2022. The site plan and any changes are to be approved by the TRC. A minimum of three parking spaces shall be designated for electric vehicle charging stations. The applicant shall provide a traffic study. And the elevations shall be approved by the Director of Community Development, the Chairman, and the District Commissioner. And this concludes the staff presentation.
Is the applicant present? Please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Philip Searls, and I would like to reserve my time for five minutes for responses. And I also like to just point out, it says on the agenda as well, the, we did request a change from, it said on the sheet, 164 units. We, we only asking for 140.
All right. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody opposed? Do you have any other additional comments, sir?
No, Commissioner, other than we very much looking forward to being a part of Clayton County.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Davis.
I know we had to revisit this, and that we still have our walking trails, our sidewalks, and our lighting in there, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All righty, all righty. And I thank you for reducing those numbers, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve B0, I'm sorry, BLC 2208-025, with the five stated conditions.
Second.
Probably move to second. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue nanos.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, our next item is item number 46, which is a public hearing for the abandonment of the right-of-way for Brenda Avenue and Linda Avenue.
Mr. Chair, this is a, a request to abandon a right-of-way. It's .46 acres of right-of-way for the closed portion of Brenda Avenue and Linda Avenue. This is a part of a requirement to, if we don't have any use for it, and their development wants to take it, we have to provide a public hearing, allow people to speak in favor or opposition to. And should the board decide to, to abandon this right-of-way, then the next item would be not, item 47, which I would read following the public hearing.
What, where is this?
Linda Way.
Yeah, I mean, what city?
Specifically, where is?
Honestly, you wouldn't see it if you drove by it. It's, it's on the northern section of Gilbert Road, on the western side. The, the roads were never built.
And I had a feeling it was in that area.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, this is a board-initiated request. And it's a public hearing, so anybody here who is, and it's board-initiated, so anybody here who would like to speak in opposition to? I'm, I'm sorry, in favor of, let's do favor of first, yes.
But you have to be a member of the board to speak?
No. Anybody in favor of this abandonment?
I would like to speak.
Come forward.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated. I have the question, if you, the county, are abandoning the property, then who is gonna own the property? To not be deceived by my questioning, if a piece of property is abandoned and nobody owns it, then it can't be maintained. And this is where your trash problem comes from, or, or part of it, is you've got to denote that somebody owns the property to have maintenance of it, either by the county or by people. And I suggest that if you have people that are bordering that property, that you deed it to the people to add to their property, so there will be, become some sort of ownership of the property. Are you following my conversation here?
Absolutely, and that's actually a good question. And
Okay.
trust me when I say that there is development in that area, and that slither of property will be maintained.
And it will be owned by the, the developers? Yes?
We're abandoning it, so I don't know if they're gonna take it, well, I don't think we're deeding it over to them, right, Mr. Reed?
If the board approves it, then they will eventually pay the cost of that little part of the abandoned right-of-way, and then they would own it as part of whatever development they're going to do.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name's Jay R. Wright. I'm a Fulton County resident. We are the developer of said piece of property, and we're also the 50% owner of a piece of property that is just to the other side of Brenda and Linda. My understanding is that it's a 40-foot right-of-way that would be divided 20 feet in each direction and deeded to the and due to the, to each property owner. It would be, become a part of a, a development that is planned as part of this area and be maintained. So, it would not be left out in, in no man's land.
Well, thank you. Anybody else in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Right, here are none. At this time, I'd like to offer a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Before you do that. I have Resolution twenty-two-two-thirty, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to abandon zero-point-four-six acre, approximately zero-point-four-six acres of right-of-way for a closed portion of Brenda Avenue and Linda Avenue. To authorize the chairman to execute any documents relating thereto and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expenses may be required to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Now, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner, Frank.
When, uh, we acquired this right-of-way, did the county pay for it? Or was it deeded over to us at no cost? Because we're talking about abandoning it, and it's been stated it's gonna be part of a project, so I do wanna know if we abandon it, are they, that means that we don't have the rights for them to purchase it? We're not recouping anything, if so?
I believe the question, as I understand you're asking, is once you approve this, will the county get money for these?
No, that starts at the top.
Okay.
In the state of Georgia, particularly in Clayton County, when you have right-of-way, we generally have to go purchase it right-of-way. That's why we don't have sidewalks going down nineteen forty-one, because the obstacle is, we have to purchase all of this land. So, the question is, when we purch, when this right-of-way became part of Clayton County's right-of-way within our coffers, did we pay for this acreage, this percentage of acreage?
There would have to be a title search run to figure out when that...
Well, we need to have that before we vote.
Well, no, the pro, the...
Mr. Wright might be able to show some light on that.
But, Mr. Chair, while he's coming up...
Come on, sir. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Hold on, second, go ahead.
While he's coming up, this, I want to be clear. Give me a second, sir.
Happy to.
If you could give me a minute. You're saying this is board-initiated. Staff is bringing this before us. I need to hear from staff, because we have to go through our probate court and our clerk of courts to do a title search, so to say that we would have to do, and you want us to vote on something? No offense to you, but I need to hear from staff that you've done what needs to be done for us to take this vote, not that we're going to. Did we pay for it, and if the county owns it, then we need to know this. The title search should have already been done. We're voting to relinquish or abandon something, but you can't even tell them that we, that we purchased it or we owned it.
I, I, I can tell you, so...
I'm glad you can.
Yeah, it's, it's an unrecorded, unaccepted right-of-way. So, in two thousand fifteen, we actually had previous pieces of Brendan and Linda Avenue. Clayton County has no record of this ever being accepted as recorded right-of-way. So, this is just basically shown on a, what was a previous survey, but never accepted by Clayton County. It was never owned by Clayton County. This is more of an, out of done of an abundance of caution by our title company.
Got it.
And we had this previously done in two thousand fifteen, when we bought the property on pieces of Brendan and Linda that were entirely held within our property.
I'm clear. So, you're saying when you purchased the property, you assumed that this was within your purchase?
Uh, it showed, we, we documented it on our survey. We knew that we were probably gonna have to come through this process when the property was coming up for development and for title insurance purposes, but because we are fifty percent owners in the land next door and the land that this is going to be split between, it's, it's specifically for title insurance purposes.
Well, then, my next question to you all. That we, did we, I'm sorry, did you all check with our tax commissioner to ensure that it's within our coffers based upon the tax roll? Did you do that? Because you said you haven't done a title search, you said you know, but did the staff do that? Because again, this has, and it was brought to us by Mr. Chair, saying it's board-initiated, but board has staff, that the staff do what needs to be done to ensure that when we take this vote, we've done everything we can. Did you check the tax rolls? Are we receiving any taxes on it to ensure it? And let me tell you why I'm asking this, because there's several parcels that you and I even talked about, Mr. Reed, over years, that is very ambiguous. It's ambiguous of ownership, it's ambiguous of taxation. Just recently, we had to work through a piece of land that wasn't properly documented. So, have we done our job here?
The piece of property that, well, let me start off, because there's a lot that you've outlined, and I don't wanna... I wanna be clear about what it is that you all are doing. There is a piece of property that is not being used, that is shown upon property that is not taxable.
Okay.
It's not, because it's not being used. It's right, we don't tax county-owned property.
Correct.
So, there would be nothing...
So, that's why I'm asking, did we ensure that we're not receiving any taxes on that land? That's why I'm working from the backwards point.
Okay.
Because you said you didn't do a title search, that's why I asked.
So, the title search is a little different than taxability. So, that's why you were asking who purchased and all that other kinda stuff, who gave it to the county? That's where a title search would come in.
Correct.
And you're asking me now whether it's taxable is a different question. So, that's why I'm kind of unsure about where you're going with this, but here, let me explain where, what would happen if the board chooses to, if you choose not to abandon it, then there's, on their tax map, unused right-of-way that's not assigned, that they will not be able to use, because the title insurer is gonna say, "This looks like this is county-owned property, and you don't own it, so you can't build on it. This is not being used by the county in any sense. There's not a road there, this unused property." It comes to the board for you to decide whether you wanna do anything with it. If you don't, then the resolution is denied, and they won't be using the property. If you do, then they will finish the rest, they'll go through a closing. The, the cost of that right-of-way that the county is giving up will receive, because we can't give county property away.
Correct.
So, the cost of that portion will be appraised. They'll pay it, we'll close, they'll be able to move on and develop it. That's kind of walking through that process.
And in order to close, you all will have to complete the title search on that portion of the land.
We, we...
Okay, thank you. I thank you.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor of I. I, opposed. Issue nanos.
Our next item is item number forty-eight, public hearing for a stream buffer variance request.
This next item is a stream buffer variance request. Then this is associated with the Eritropus East Logistics Center, and this is to approve a stream buffer variance and a non-imperious setback for property located at thirty-nine forty-five Gilbert Road. Again, once the board, if they choose to approve this setback, then item forty-nine will be what you all will use to do that.
Once again, it's a public hearing, board-initiated. Anybody here like to speak in favor of? Come forward.
Thank you all. We are looking to obtain our last approval required for the rerouting of an existing stream that's currently crossing the center of our site, making the site undevelopable. We've already been approved by the Army Corps of Engineers for the rerouting and disturbance of the stream, and we've also been approved by the Georgia State Environmental Protection Division for the twenty-five-foot stream buffer variance, allowing us to disturb within the twenty-five-foot stream, uh, state stream buffer that's to be rerouted. We're now asking to disturb the fifty and seventy-five-foot stream buffer that are out, uh, outside of this twenty-five-foot state buffer located on the stream, only in the area that the stream is approved to be disturbed and routed by the Corps and the Environmental Protection Division, and we have already purchased our, uh, stream mitigation credits as outlined by the Army Corps and the Georgia Environmental Protection Division.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? All right, Mr. Reed.
Resolution twenty-two-two-thirty-four is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to approve a stream buffer variance, to authorize the chairman to execute any documents relating thereto and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect appropriate revenue source and expenses may be required to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor of I. I, opposed.
The only thing is, can you provide the documentation, because staff did not give it to us. Everything that you said was approved, if you don't mind. Thank you, you can send an email.
Issue nanos, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next item is public comment. The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes maximum time limit with a total time of twenty minutes. Please note that all comments must be limited to matters, matters on the agenda or matters over which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
All right, is the Honorable Valencia Stovall here? Yes, ma'am, there you go.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and Clayton residents and other guests. I'm Honorable Valencia Stovall, and I'm excited about, uh, we were able to bring tonight, which I end up sending you all information about, uh, citizens who are Clayton County residents on participating in making the connection with the four-one-one Clayton County. And this particular works, workshop series allows the residents to learn the best ways to navigate their government. And so, this meeting tonight is one of the series workshops that they attend. And it's a collaboration of U-Serve three-sixty, GYCC, which is Georgia Youth Career Center, Seven Pillars Career Academy Charter School, which is located in Clayton County, and United Way of Greater Atlanta. And so, what they have been doing so far is discussing the roles of the elected officials. Um, they've done a voter registration, um, budget and taxes, how it works together. Um, they're, of course, attending the meeting tonight with the Commissioners. They'll be attending the school board meeting, they'll also be attending the appointed board meeting for one of the boards that you all have appointed. They'll be visiting the agencies located throughout the county, uh, visit, of course, to the state capitol, and also learning how to do business in Clayton County. And so, we were cul- cul- culminated with the grad- graduation in which they will receive a certification or certificate in civic leadership. So, I just wanted to come and bring that information to you all and others, um, throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mickey Garber.
You already know who I am. Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Brex, Georgia. I would like to make a public service announcement. And I'm gonna make this announcement, 'cause neither of y'all Commissioners and Chairman have seen it appropriate to make such announcements. Halloween is coming up, and y'all should have told, made a public service announcement to all the children in the county that you so dearly care for, that their candy wrappers from Halloween should go in the proper receptacle. I'm gonna give you another opportunity to do that same thing, so I won't have to remind you on Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years. So, remember, public service announcement. Coming to zoning of new businesses. I'm gonna change degrees here. You should always have conditions, not just approve it, but have the conditions of new businesses outside cleanliness to the degree of QuickTrip, to the degree of Chick-fil-A, and to the degree of Allen Vigil. That should be the standard for every business that comes into this county, doing business in this county, and otherwise living in this county. We should all have high standards to live by. Dr. Maurice Beasley always told us that we come from high standards. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Having a hard time reading this name, it looks like Jurley Denton.
What's that for?
I don't know. Oh, that's the, that's the media guy.
This is?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Joycelyn Venom in unincorporated Clayton County, and I come tonight to speak to you about the safety in our community. And I'm very concerned about that. I've spoken to the Commissioner, I've spoken to the Chief of Police, and someone he's referred me to, because now a lot of the property in our area is being owned by investors. And when investors come, they rent the property. And the property values sometimes go down, as well as I'm having to call code enforcements about things that are happening in my neighborhood, as well as people are breaking into my home. Not only that, they've thrown things at me, and now people are following me. Some may be right here in this office right now that have been following me everywhere I go. My concern is to bring to you that I need someone to be comfortable and talking to me about keeping me safe in this community, in my neighborhood as well, because I'm concerned about that, and I want it to be talked about. I want everybody to know that's here now, so if anything happens to me, I have made it my concern to tell the Commissioners of Clayton County what I'm dealing with. If you need to talk with me later, I'm available, please, because that's my number one concern. Some people are probably sitting in this place right now that have been following me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Joycelyn, I know that after the last conversation we had had, I'm sorry...
Please stand before him.
Did you ever, did you reach out to the chief to begin to handle that issue, that issue?
I reached out to the chief, and he referred me someone else, and that person referred me to someone else. They were supposed to have, uh, GP, General Patrol. I don't know anything, I haven't seen anybody, they may have come, but that's what I asked for, and I don't know whether that's happening, because I don't see anybody.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody?
Brenda Thomas. Thank you, ma'am. Brenda Thomas.
Good evening, Board. My name is Jake Canana Shue. I'm a resident of DeKalb County, but I represent Ms. Thomas, a former employee of the Clayton County Sheriff's Office. After nearly twenty years of service to the people of Clayton County, Ms. Thomas's employment was terminated in two thousand eighteen. She believes unjustly, I agree, and since that time, she has been waiting for her civil service appeal in front of the Civil Service Board. Nearly four years, she and over a dozen other former employees of the Sheriff's Office have been waiting for their appeals to be heard. In that time, their back pay has been accruing. Tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars of Clayton County money is looming over the Sheriff's Office head, and all the Sheriff's Office can seem to do is find ways to delay these proceedings, delay these proceedings... delay these proceedings from going forward. Most recently, they have pointed out that the Clayton County Code in Part 1, Article 4, Section 3, and Section 4-61 require that alleged conflicts of interest be heard by an hearing officer who is impartial, not a member of the Clayton County Civil Service Board. Currently, there are no hearing officers available to hear the conflict of interest that the Sheriff's Office has alleged against the entire Civil Service Board. And for the last several months, we've been trying to get somebody to take this issue seriously. In the code for Clayton County, it empowers, this is somewhat unusual, I know, it empowers the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners individually to establish the criteria for a pool of hearing officers empowered to hear these conflicts of interest, as well as the process by which the Civil Service Board selects a member of that pool to hear a given dispute. The code does allow the Chairman at his discretion-
I'm sorry, sir. Your time is up, but I will be able to tell you. And I don't see our HR director here, but we have made some progress in terms of naming a hearing officer. So, hopefully, once we get everything in place, those hearings will be forthcoming.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
If you need anything, contact information, I'm happy to be of any assistance.
Thank you, sir. Gerald Rose.
Been a long time, Jeff. First of all, my name is Gerald Rose, President of New Order National Human Rights Organization. I'm here in support of certain Clayton County residents on the complaints of Tyre Boulevard as far as the safety, no sidewalks. And there has been several, several incidents on that particular street. And I know you are elected officials who are blaming right now if their complaint is our voters who's not voting to replace people if you're not doing your job. Because while we had a march there, we was on the side of the street, there was an accident right when we was there taking action. You know, so I just hope, you know, and I understand doing my research, there has been several, there's several memorial sites on Tyre Boulevard. You know, I take that very serious. That's a busy area. And then, of course, the problem that happened with the seven-year-old, we understand that doesn't, some of it is your problem, but most of it is the parents' problem that we lost a seven-year-old on Tyre Boulevard. And that really hurt me right there. You know, so I'm just hoping that we take this serious. I heard you'd mentioned 1941 earlier. I really appreciate that. You know, so I'm just hoping that we can put this on the agenda. And safety is very, very important. You know, Tyre Boulevard is a very, very busy area, very busy street. And to my understanding, there's several people has came up here several times talking about it, but we not being about it. You know, so I'm just hoping that we can get that changed. Again, thank you. You allow me from coming up here, I live in Fulton County, but as an activist, I travel across this country. That's, you know, their rights is being violated. These people are losing their lives on Tyre Boulevard. And I hope you all agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I hope you all come back on November 11th when GDOT is here. They will be, Georgia Department of Transportation will be giving an update regarding Tyre Boulevard. So, please come back.
So, yeah, there's been discussions centered around Tyre Boulevard. So, yes, we are definitely trying to do something about it. Alita Roundtree. Did she? Okay. Thank you. Leslie Salmon. Leslie? Carol Yancy.
Carol Yancy, Rex, Georgia. Clayton County Government has 2,399 employees. 95% of them are county residents, meaning taxpayers and voters. But 100% of them are suffering with stress and sicknesses due to a hostile work environment created by several commissioners pushing their personal agendas and targeting good county employees, directors, and organizations with their falsehood, professionalism, and unethical conduct. The same three act the same way towards residents. All we get are the pronouns "I," "me," and "my" versus the will of the people and addressing our concerns, continually putting the residents last after they vote for certain things, such as public comments, mandatory trash pickup, and zoning warehouse in August that you approved after it was being denied by staff and ZAG and residents. We do, Commissioner Franklin, deserve and need better district commissioners for one, two, and three. In 2024, we will vote out district commissioners out of the county government. Chairman Turner, I have a couple, one question and one request. Mandatory trash pickup. Since the three commissioners have made it clear they don't want to be bothered with us, is it possible you can come to our districts and talk to us face-to-face about mandatory trash pickup and our concerns?
Sure.
Thank you. Question. How soon do y'all get these agendas and the items on here?
About a week out.
A week out? So, plenty of time for everybody to do the research and have the questions instead of trying to grandstand up here.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Chris Gallagher. I'm sorry. I meant to say Tom Brown. Oh, I thought you had come. No, you're good. Oh, I'm sorry.
How you doing, Chairman, Commissioners? Chris Gallagher, Clayton County, Rivers Edge. I want to thank you, Commissioner Franklin, for your hard work there. I know you've had an uphill battle there. Shayna Rooks had talked to me and said, "We're looking at federal grants that we do not have to pay back in splash funds to turn this into a walking trail fix-up." Because it's a blight on our neighborhood there. We have almost 1,300 homes in there. Two of the buildings lately had to be demolished. They were in such bad shape and everything there. Since you came in office, it's had to be pushed back. There's no money in the splash fund. You know, excuse after excuse, they did hole number eight and nine. You know, they did it any old way just to shut us up there. There's already been no movement, you know, since on it there. You know, you have snakes, rats, everything there. You can't walk half the trails. They're not safe. And they don't have any money in the splash fund. They don't have it. I keep hearing for years there. Now, they get some money there. Now, they're talking about allocating it to different projects. You know, we're tired of waiting and waiting there. It's bringing down our property values there. This project being done would increase our property values. It'd bring more people into the area to use it because people drive in just to walk that little section of number eight and number nine there. So, the project needs to move forward. Quit giving us excuses, putting it on the back burner there. And I mean, if I went around and, you know, you did the splash, this is what we're going to use it to. But if I went and I said to people, "Hey, I want you to give me your money there and I'm going to do this project." And if I went and used on something else there, they'd be screaming fried there and have the police knocking on my door and that. So, when you vote for a splash fund, the money needs to be used for that. But I do thank you, trying to get push announcement, uphill battle, but we need to get this project moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
And Mr. Gallagher, I will be meeting with you all and I will send out a press release because that's why I voted no. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, that concludes the public comment. And before I ask Mr. Reed whether or not we need executive session, which I'm sure we do, I would like to make a public service announcement. Halloween is forthcoming, and I would like everybody who is out trick-or-treating to be responsible with disposing of your litter and your candy in a responsible manner. God bless you.
Yes, litigation only.
What?
Litigation only.
Excuse me, everybody, if we can just be quiet as we leave out.
Personnel.
Personnel and litigation.
Litigation and personnel.
I'll make a motion going to executive session, personnel and litigation. Is there a second? No, I made a motion. You second. Those in favor, aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Madam Clerk, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Motion to reconvene. So moved. Second, those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Yes, Mr. Reed, please.
All right. I'll take them both together per your direction. First is a settlement in a matter of Leslie Bastillo versus Clayton County in relation to an accident that occurred on or around November 18th, 2020, at the intersection of Battle Creek Road and Battle Creek Village. And this is releasing claims against the county senior services and James Patterson. And this is in the amount of $42,000. The next is a settlement in the civil service appeal relating to Robin Stinnett. And this is in the amount of approximately $15,000, as well as withdrawal of the pending civil service appeal. And also requesting that the Chairman has authority to execute the inner office or the settlement for Robin Stinnett and the chief financial officer to amend the budget for both of these to reflect the terms of both these agreements.
All right. Is that motion to approve? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.